To Watsonville City Council for Tuesday, March 29, 2022. It is 6:30, and we will begin with roll call, please.
Dutra.
Here.
Estrada.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Hurst.
Here.
Montesino.
Here.
Gidos Carter.
Here.
And Parker.
Here.
Thank you very much. We have no motion to excuse any absent council members as we are all present. And so if you will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated if you would like to. Moving out to presentations and oral communications this time is set aside for members of the general public to address the council on any item not on the council agenda, which is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. No action or discussion shall be taken on any item presented, except that any council member may respond to the statements made or questions asked, or may ask questions for clarification. All matters of an administrative nature will be referred to staff. All matters relating to council will be noted in the minutes and may be scheduled for discussion at a future meeting, or referred to staff for clarification and report. All speakers are asked to fill out a speaker card and leave it at the podium. Speakers are asked to announce their name and district in which they live in order to obtain an accurate record for the minutes. So do we have anybody from the public who would like to approach the podium? Okay, seeing no speakers from the public, we'll move on to a report out of closed session.
Closed session is in recess for the moment, but there's, at this point, there's no reportable action.
Thank you. So, once again, no members of the public are approaching the podium, so we will move to council. Council, do you, would you like to, I'll start with our councilwoman Vanessa Gidos Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to let the public know about the grand opening of the Luna y Sol Center that is at 15 Madison Street, and that is tomorrow from 4 to 7, and I will be there for the ribbon cutting. And that is all. Thank you very much.
Fabulous. Councilman Hurst.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to congratulate Community Bridges for their wonderful presentation of their new program in the city of Watsonville, Elder Day. They've had Elder Day in Santa Cruz for quite a while, and so it'll be an adjustment, but it certainly will result in more direct services to our senior citizens of a very high caliber nature. And so congratulations to Community Bridges for that work. Also want to congratulate our Parks and Rec and our Friends of Parks and Rec for a wonderful Cesar Chavez Award last evening. Very, very moving to hear Dolores Huerta in person via Zoom and the, of many awardee winners that received the congratulations of dozens and dozens of people. Have a happy April Fool's Day, and don't forget to pay your taxes.
Councilwoman Garcia.
Yes. Last Thursday, I had the opportunity to help serve lunch for Community Champions Week and the 50th anniversary of Meals on Wheels at the Senior Center. Before serving, I had the opportunity to go to table by table to speak to most of the seniors present. I enjoyed their candor about the good and bad of Watsonville. The number one issue was pedestrian safety for seniors. They truly are afraid of the fast-moving traffic that they encounter. They loved the center and found purpose in attending it. For the Spanish speakers, they had an ask, and that was to have ESL classes. Katie Nunes, the manager of the center, is working with Adult Ed to make this happen. I also conversed with Katie about volunteering at the Senior Center after I get termed out from City Council in December. She agreed that beginning in January, I can teach seniors how to write memoirs for their many, many stories that they can share. Finally, I was able to have lunch with them, and their meal of albóndigas was delicious. Several had their own chili sauce, which they shared with me, and truly more enjoyed that albóndigas. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Estrada.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to thank the community who's joining us either via online or on social media, on TV. Thank you for joining us today. Just to echo my colleague Lowell's sentiment about Elder Day, that was great. I attended that. I was very honored to be, to be there and to see that space, the old J.C. Penney space, be reimagined for our elder community. And, you know, I think our elder communities definitely, you know, they deserve nice things and modern things, and things where, you know, they can go to access opportunities for health and wellness. So we want to thank Community Bridges for that, and Lowell, and Rebecca, who were there too. That was nice to see you there. The Cesar Chavez Awards, as Lowell mentioned, were yesterday. A big thank you to Friends of Parks and Community Services. They did such a great job. To Dolores Huerta and to all the awardees. That was just a really positive event. It's great to see all the great things happening in our community, and I think it's great to be able to highlight and to, you know, honor people in our community that are doing amazing work every day. So that was fantastic. I, just a big thank you to the library staff. I took my daughter Catalina for the first time to the library, and she loved it. She loved it. She wants to go back already. And so just thank you for the staff for their kindness and generosity. I really appreciated that. Nerdville is May 1, so we're looking for volunteers. We're going to need volunteers. We have a big announcement coming up, I think, this Friday on April Fool's Day, so make sure to check out Instagram and social media. And by the way, I'm really sorry about my social media. It got hacked, so if you're getting Bitcoin messages, I apologize for that. And just finally, just a shout out to the, the, the staff that goes and they play soccer every Tuesday at the Soccer Central Arena. I've been able to join them the last couple of weeks, and it's just really great to spend time with them. So that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Dutra.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I first wanted to say, oh my gosh. On the 18th, myself and councilmember Garcia were able to go to UC Santa Cruz on a tour that was put on by Jacob Martinez, and, you know, trying, we learned a lot. I learned a lot about UCSC, and, and they're really trying to do more outreach, especially to the community of Watsonville and to the students in our, in our schools. So it was really great to see all the, the good and positive things that they're doing, and their really cool dorm life that they're building. So thank you, Jacob, for doing that, and everybody else that was a part of that. It was, it was great. And to add to the Wednesday lineup of events to do, Staff of Life is also having their one-year anniversary tomorrow. It is also between 4 and 7, so we can do both and go out and celebrate with the Staff of Life and the Eastlake Shopping Center. And I also wanted to send my condolences out to, for Mr. Jess Tabasa. He was our, he was my social studies teacher, EA Hall, and I just remember what a good teacher he was, and he's being missed by so many people. So our condolences out to his family. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Protem Montesino.
Yeah, nothing to report to this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, everything I was going to say was already said by our fabulous council. I do want to say a remembrance of Jess Tabasa, who is a contemporary, you know, a few years younger than my mom at 99, and he was in his late 80s, but he and his sister have been around in education here in the Para Valley Unified for decades upon decades. Mr. Tabasa was one of those teachers where you either just absolutely loved him or the opposite. And regardless of one or the other, you learned when you were in his class. He was a great teacher, and he was committed to being an educator for all kids. Thank you, Jimmy, for mentioning Staff of Life. It's a one-year anniversary. Come on out tomorrow, Wednesday, and celebrate that. Looking forward to Nerdville, and we'll have to talk about that awesome April 1 announcement, as well as, and last night was a thrill because I got to introduce Dolores Huerta for the Friends of Parks and Rec and our adult role model award went to Jacob Martinez, the school Diamond Technology Institute. The youth-serving organization was the Community Action Board of Santa Cruz County, the Youth Homeless Response Team. The young person was Isaac Garcia, who spoke very eloquently. And the Friends of Watsonville PCS Award, which is a new one, was El Fríjolito. And so it was well-attended, and, and everybody did such a great job. Thank you very much. And we're moving on to our consent agenda. All items appearing on the consent agenda are recommended actions which are considered to be routine and will be acted upon as one consensus motion. Any items removed will be considered immediately after the consensus motion. The mayor will allow public input prior to the approval of the consent agenda. So at this time, would anybody in the public like to speak to anything on the consent agenda? Seeing no public input, I will turn to council for a motion.
I'm going to move consent agenda.
One second.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second.
Dutra.
Yes.
Estrada.
Aye.
Garcia.
Yes.
Hurst.
Aye.
Montesino.
Yes.
Gidos Carter.
Aye.
And Parker.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. So we have no items removed from the consent agenda, so we will be moving on to our public hearings, ordinances and appeals. So 8A is our interim guide, guidance rules and regulations to implement SB 9, the California Housing Opportunity and More Efficiency Home Act, recommended by Community Development Director Miriam, who is going to be presenting.
Good afternoon, or good evening. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Susie Miriam. I'm the Community Development Director. As we are all very well aware, there is a housing crisis in California, and state lawmakers have been proposing multiple bills intended to address this concern. And last September, the state legislator adopted the, and the government signed one such bill, which is known as Senate Bill 9 or SB 9. This requires proposed housing developments containing no more than two residential units on a single parcel within a single-family residential zone to be considered ministerially. And SB 9 further requires that a local agency ministerially approve a parcel map for an urban lot split to create two parcels from one single-family residential parcel when it meets certain requirements. This bill became effective January 1, 2022. So I just kind of tried to put together a quick table to outline sort of the differences between single-family residential development standards and what SB 9 would do. So the minimum lot size for the single-family residential zone is 6,000 square feet. SB 9, did I just say SB 2? I'm going to go SB 9. SB 9 requires us to approve a lot split to create two parcels that are no less than 1,200 square feet. So if you have a single-family zone parcel that's less than 6,000 square feet, you can split it as long as the two new parcels are 1,200 square feet in area. You can create two parcels with, with SB 9, and the number of units on, allowed on each parcel ministerially is, is two. So if you had one 6,000-square-foot lot, you took it and you split it, you could put two units on each lot. Currently, in single-family residential zones, you can have your single unit, your ADU, and your junior ADU. And then land division approval is usually done through the Minor Land Division Committee, which is a public hearing. Through SB 9, this would, would be done ministerially, which would mean it would be done over the counter without, without a public hearing. Though it may seem relatively straightforward, but there are a lot of complexities with this bill, including how it relates to other recently passed regulations like the ADU and JADU ordinance. And some of this ambiguity right now is working its way through the system, and we're hearing back on challenges to certain cities and, and their interpretation and zoning regulations for this. And so we want to wait and see kind of a little bit how it plays out before we adopt final regulations on this. And we plan to bring that final ordinance to you for consideration in the next six months. There are some caveats to SB 9 as it relates to both the construction of units and the creation of new lots. And in order to use SB 9 for the development of new units, you cannot, the project can't require the demolition of affordable housing. You, you can't demolish a rental unit, so you can't displace tenants. There's, you can't demolish more than 25% of the existing structural walls of, of the existing structure. The units cannot be located within a historic district or listed on any historic register, and, and it cannot be located in a high fire hazard severity zone, which I don't believe any part of the city of Watsonville currently is. And then for lot splits, all of those previous requirements would apply, but then again, each parcel can't be any smaller than 1,200 square feet, and the subdivision, each of the parcels have to be either the same size or a 60/40 split, and each parcel has to have access to a public right-of-way. So it has to have either driveway or direct street access. So the following interim guidance for objective design standards for residential construction are up on your screen. It would allow up to two units. There would be a deed restriction required that if they, if a property owner invokes SB 9, they can't in the future do additional lot splits or additional units on the property. There would be no setback requirements for existing structures, but any new structures would have a minimum four-foot setback, and that's per the SB 9 regulations. There are also objective design standards for exterior design, landscaping, private open space, patios and decks, access to the units, windows design, as well as, as parking. Now, the parking on, on, on this is, is either if it's located within a half a mile of a high-quality transit stop or a car share within a half a mile of a high-quality transit stop or a car share, um, facility, no parking spaces, no off-street parking spaces can be required. If those two, um, items are not met, then we can require one parking space per unit. And for, um, the high-quality transit stop with this regulation, that means that it's a regular bus, um, that has 15-minute intervals during, um, peak, peak commute periods. So with that, staff recommends that city council consider approving a resolution adopting the interim guidance rules and regulations to implement SB nine and direct staff to prepare an SB nine implementing ordinance. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, does council have any clarifying questions? I'll start with Councilwoman Garcia.
Okay. Uh, I've got two questions. Uh, you mentioned that Watsonville doesn't have any high fire, uh, high fire hazard areas, but it talks about other specified designated areas. What would those be?
Um, I, the other designated areas I believe are 100-foot flood, uh, the floodplain, 100-year floodplain or in a floodway.
Oh.
We, and we have that.
We do have that, yes.
Okay. My second question is, uh, it's about the parking. Uh, have we identified areas where, uh, we could have two lots, uh, that are close to transportation resources identified by the bill?
We don't have any car share in this city, but as we've looked at the, the transit routes, um, in the city, pretty much, um, most, all of the city is within, um, this criteria, within a half mile of a, of a bus stop that has a 15-minute headway.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman, uh, Dutra.
Thank you. Um, I have two questions as well. Um, Councilwoman Garcia started kind of where I was going with, with the question. Um, what areas of town, um, don't meet the requirements SB nine? Do we like, do we have any historical, um, neighborhoods? Where, what parts of town could this not be implemented?
Well, you know, you think about, and I was, I was, I had the zoning map and, and it just didn't carry forward when I emailed this presentation over tonight, um, to show you guys where, where the single-family residential zones are. But you think over, um, kind of off of Bruington, those are out of the floodplain. Most of the single-family residential zones are outside the floodplain. Um, we do not have any historic, uh, districts in the city. Um, and then the historic, uh, residences, you know, those are, they're spread out all over the city, but mostly not in single-family zones.
Okay. So those houses you couldn't, you could not do this too if there was a historical house?
Yeah, you couldn't, you couldn't, you couldn't tear them down.
Okay.
Exactly. You might be able to, to do a lot split. It looks like Denise, you might have a clarifying. No, I, that's.
Yes, that's correct. So if, if there is, it's a, it has to be a historical district, a designated historical district, and then the SB nine, whether it's a two-lot, uh, residential, an urban lot split or two residential unit, you couldn't be located in that historical district.
Okay. Okay.
And I was going to add with the special flood hazard area, there, you know, there's a lot of requirements relating to that application of that prohibition. So we would have to look at it. It has to be an area designated by FEMA in an official map published by FEMA, um, to be, to qualify for that exemption.
Okay. And I wonder if that, are we published by FEMA?
Yeah, we are.
Yes.
Okay, then we're good. Um, and then my last question is, and I think this is going to make some people's lives, um, a, a little bit easier, is that a lot of people already have their ADUs in the back and they've, and, um, we used to have the requirement, I believe it was four feet of, from the, a setback, correct? Now this is saying that if you're existing, if you have an existing unit, that does not apply. So this is going to, um, relieve a lot of, um, stress from people who are, are probably under the assumption that they're going to need to somehow create four feet. Um, so now hopefully we'll be able to get these units, um, you know, with the proper permitting. Is that correct?
That's correct. Although the new, um, ADU and JADU regulations also have, um, allowances for zero setback for existing buildings as well. So if someone does have that situation, they should definitely look at, um, talking to us and, and maybe looking at legalizing it.
Okay, great. Not that I know anybody. I'm just saying I've heard.
I know, I know.
Yeah, but I, I have a, I just have a follow-up with that one. Um, so people that already have existing ADUs in the back?
Yes.
Who may not have had legal ADUs from our perspective. Uh, what would they do? How would they, how would they move forward with that?
Uh, they might give us a call and just talk to a planner to see, um, you know, what the options are. We definitely are, you know, we are happy to help and advise, uh, property owners and we will not be, you know, writing down their addresses and going out with code enforcement, um, to go after them. We really are, are, um, trying, you know, our goal as well as to get these units legalized so that they're safe to be, um, to be lived in by, uh, by residents.
Okay. And the, the special flood hazard area, you can't build an ADU in a special flood hazard area?
You can build, um, you can build an ADU or JADU in a, in a flood zone. There's just, you know, additional, additional requirements that you have to meet.
Which may inquire, what is it, insurance?
Well, you need the flood insurance, but you also need to build, um, one foot about, above the base flood elevation and, uh, you know, get a flood.
So, so then that would mean you're looking directly into the windows of your neighbors in these small places.
Not necessarily. I know it sounds.
Having lived there.
Yeah, it sounds, it sounds, um, daunting, but a lot of times it may only be a foot or, or two feet above.
No, I'm just saying, uh, having lived there and having had a neighbor who put their thing up for a foot, you stand there, they can look into the bedrooms. And, uh, yeah, that's, that's distressing sounding, especially for seniors. Okay. Any other questions? Uh, uh, Mayor Protem?
Uh, welcome to a real world. I, I live in, neighborhood like that and it's quite comfortable. It's okay.
Thanks for the condescension. Greatly appreciate that for all of our seniors.
Landscaping and curtains.
Yes, yes, landscaping and curtains. That's what you, that's what we do in our neighborhoods. Um, but I, I have a question. So, uh, like you said, you, you, the map didn't translate, but can you send us that, that map?
Absolutely.
Where there's opportunities, because I just looked at, uh, is this is an opportunity for, for, for people that, that want to do, uh, want to split their parcel or?
Yeah, you know, I can actually just. I'll just pull it up for you guys. There we go. So, trying to fit. So all of the yellow, um, all the areas in yellow on the map are single-family residential designated zones. So you can see this is Main Street going across and then Freedom. So there's, there are a lot of, um, a lot of properties that SB nine might be.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Estrada?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you for your presentation, Suzie. I had a clarifying question. So I appreciate, uh, what you, uh, I appreciate knowing what you had mentioned about the, having right-of-ways or, um, access to either the driveway or the street. So could there, uh, could there be two owners?
Yes, yes. So with a lot split, it's two properties.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, i- if the, if the owner, whoever owns it right now decided to sell, they could sell that piece, the half of it? Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. That was my clarifying question.
Your work.
Uh, Councilman Hurst?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, does slope have any factor here? Because there's a lot of lots in Watsonville that have a high slope profile or other soil conditions such as, uh, Phil or Pete? Would that have any impact?
These, um, any unit is still going to be subject to all of our other design criteria. And I do believe the public works standard does not allow construction on anything higher than a 30% slope. Um, and then any of the, the soil conditions, that would need to be, you know, they would need to do some kind of engineered foundation.
Thank you. That's, uh, good to know as well. How about that, um, how many lots do you think that we have that are not within the high-quality transportation parameters? Do we have an idea of who's inside that and who's outside? Because those parameters are probably changeable, I would assume.
Yes, if Metro added bus lines or took them away or, or, yes, um, reduced bus routes or frequency. Um, given that our city is very compact, um, I, I think most, all of our residential, single-family residential zones, we've looked at this for the ADU regulations as well, all of them, um, meet that requirement.
So generally that would be in effect?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Mayor, if I could add on to that response, I just wanted to add that, um, there's, there's the high-quality transit corridor, but then there's also, um, a specification that if there's a car-share vehicle located within one block of the parcel, then off-street parking, uh, shall not be imposed. So there is that, that other secondary, um, allowance for car-share vehicles. It's not yet known exactly what the intent was. Um, it doesn't define car-share vehicle, so it's not clear what the legislature meant when it said a car-share vehicle, but, um, but there is that allowance for, for that if a car-share vehicle is, uh, located with one, within one block of the parcel.
Well, Eduardo and I are going to share a car.
Yeah, or if somebody, you know.
I'm sure it'll get further defined, but if it's a business. Thank you very much. So I'll go to the public if there are any public comments. And as we have no public comments, I'll come back to the council for a motion.
I'll move the resolution or staff report.
Okay, so we have, uh, a motion for the resolution?
I'll second it.
And a second from, uh, Councilwoman Garcia, resolution adopting interim guidance rules and regulations to implement SB nine, the California Housing Opportunity and More Efficiency Home Act and authorizing and directing the preparation of an SB nine implementing ordinance. Roll call, please.
Dutra?
Aye.
Estrada?
Aye.
Garcia?
Yes.
Hurst?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Quidos Carter?
Aye.
And Parker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're moving on to new business. 9A, we have an update regarding statewide eviction protections, multi-jurisdictional efforts to provide assistance and appropriation of $20,000 from the Affordable Housing Fund to support those regional efforts, um, recommended by Community Development Director Miriam. And we're going to be listening to a staff report by Housing Manager Landavere. Welcome, Carlos.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Parker, councilmembers, Carlos Landavere, Housing Manager in the Community Development Department. So today we want to give you an update on the expiration of the eviction moratorium that is statewide. And so, but I'd like to give you a background or when we started about two years ago, March 16th, that's when the governor issued an executive order that permitted local governments to protect their tenants if they wished to do so, and they could enact their own protections. And so with that, the city council here on March 23rd passed an urgency eviction ordinance that protected residential and commercial tenants through May 31st. Then the governor issued another executive order that extended that power through the end of September. In the meantime, also the judicial council directed their courts not to process any eviction cases. And so while all of that was happening in 2020, there was a lot of uncertainty and we were expecting waves of evictions. And so the legislature took action and AB 3088 replaced all of those local ordinance and it established a statewide eviction moratorium that was set to expire in January of 2021. So at the last minute, SB 91 was passed and it extended those protections through July 1st. And it also established the state emergency rental assistance program where housing is key as we know it now. SB 91 was further extended by AB 32. AB 32 essentially extended SB 91 protections through September 30th, but it also increased the rental assistance reimbursement to 100%. The original housing is key program used a concept where the landlords would accept 80% of the back rent, and if they did so, then 20% would have to be forgiven. And so that created issues statewide. Locally, we had issues with the entire state system. The, the system, well, and it still works like that where people have to apply online. And locally, we know that we have people that are not computer savvy, but the initial two, three months, we found out that even computer savvy, tech savvy people had issues applying for that program. So, at the grassroots level, COPA leaders and their sister organizations throughout the state, they did a lot of work. They worked with the legislature and AB 32 was affixed to that and it was thanks to all of their efforts. And so that 80% went away and AB 32 guaranteed that landlords would get 100% of their back rent. And, uh, with AB 82, landlords, after October 1st, they could go to court and get some evictions, but they also had to comply with certain requirements. Essentially, they had to give tenants a chance to apply for rental assistance. And if they applied, if they qualified, then they couldn't evict them until April 1st, this Friday. So AB 82 expires on March 31st. And so in the meantime, since all of March, we have heard from our local partners, community members, service providers, that AB 32 expires on the 31st, and we still have a lot of people that have applied for rental assistance that haven't received anything. So in the last couple of days, the legislature is trying to work something to extend those protections, and that's AB 2179. As of today, it's moving through its ladder through the state, and we expect to hear something by Thursday. The way if we take SB 91 and AB 82 and even AB 3088, those were passed at the, at the very last minute. And so we expect that something will happen by the 31st. And so in the meantime, locally, and the reason why, I believe you have heard from some service providers and community members, that they feared that a wave of evictions was coming come April 1st. And the reason is because at the county level, we've had over 3,300 complete applications, but only 1,600. These are the numbers today. The numbers you got in our, our staff report were reflective of last week's state numbers. Um, and so 1,600 out of 3,352 complete applications, which is just under half of that number. About $17 million have been paid out a few weeks ago. And when the program started, there were $16.9 million available for the county of Santa Cruz. As of two weeks ago, when we drafted our staff report, we heard that the state had $17.8 million available. And just late last week, we learned that that amount is actually about $36 million, which is good news for us, right? Um, and so if $17 million cover almost half of the county applicants, we And so if $17 million cover almost half of the county applicants, we expect that the rest $19 million would be able to cover most of our applicants, which is really good news. But we still have that March 31st as the, as a problem date, unless something happens, if it gets extended. So locally, for the city of Watsonville, as of today, 889 complete applications, 416 families have been assisted for a total of almost $3.3 million. That leaves about 473 families that haven't received anything. That would be at the 78, 77 average for each assistance, that would represent another $3.7 million. So with $19 million coming, I think that's, that's doable. And so you've heard from some service providers and community members that they feared that at least half of these families haven't received anything, and if they don't pay their rent, if they're not current on April 1st, landlords can go to court, they can serve them with a notice to pay or quit, and we would have problems. And so what are we doing about it, right? And so here locally, and I'll talk about our rental assistance program and what the city has been doing since the pandemic, but our local actions, since the rental assistance program started, there is a local partner network. These are official nonprofits that are part of the Housing Is Key program. They have received funds to do outreach and to help people fill out those applications. And so these are the official members of our local partner network, including CRLA, CAB, Community Bridges, Families in Transition, COPA, United Way, the Conflict Resolution Center. Unofficially, the city also partnered, we were members of that group, we provided, we did a lot of outreach, and we helped some people apply, or we would refer them to one of our local partner networks. And so that's, I was doing some of that outreach during, during a farmer's market. But we also attended different community events, local churches, the Campesino Caravan, we went to farmworker sites to provide farmworkers with very specific information on how to get help. People or other groups that have worked with us include Salud Para la Gente, the school district, the Campesino Caravan. And locally, for the city, it wasn't just the housing division, our Public Works Department, all of our utility workers, they were handing out flyers, letting people know that help was on the way. And so we were doing our part. Originally, we didn't see the same enthusiasm. But now, in March, now that we have this pending deadline, originally, we started talking about it. And so we've been in contact and communication with our county partners, with our city partners, and on March 22nd, you may have heard, the Board of Supervisors approved $500,000 to be used in this regional effort to help applicants complete their applications, get everything to the state, so that we could bring more money locally out of all the money that the state has. We've met, the city of Santa Cruz had something that went to council, they got direction to come back to council, and, and we hear that they also want to contribute to this effort. City of Capitola is doing the same, they're repurposing CDBG funds to help with rental assistance, and we want to do the same at the regional level. It is in our interest to work together. As you know, the city limits go only so far, but once you go one block over, it is the county. And we do get a lot of people that call our, our office asking for help, and unfortunately, if they're not within the city limits, we can't help them. But they don't know that. So it helps if we work together and we have one uniform, consistent message that we can give to everyone, and they can go somewhere for help. And so we're very interested in working regionally. The, in principles and priority areas for this local investment is really to help people complete and get their money from Housing Is Key and to keep people housed, but also to look at and address any underlying issues. We know that just paying one or three months of rent may not be enough for some families. Some people may need extra help, but some people may also need extra counseling, because if they don't have a plan to pay rent after two, three months, we're going to be in the same situation. But the idea is that in doing so, that we will avoid evictions in general, both formal and informal. And we plan to do that through outreach, education and counseling, legal assistance, and mediation. And so I said I would bring the rental assistance program back, because since 2020, when this whole thing started, the city, as soon as we had our first CDBG coronavirus allocation, the council said, this is an emergency, it's a priority, and we used all of that money to provide rental assistance and food distribution. The second allocation of the CDBG coronavirus money was used for the same purpose. And once the state program started, we stopped our rental assistance, because we knew that at the end of that state program, or at the end of the eviction moratorium, people would need help. And here in Watsonville, we know, because we have residents that don't qualify for that program, or have issues applying for that program. And some of those groups include undocumented people that work, they live locally, but because of their immigration status, they may have a rental agreement under their real name, but then they may be getting a paycheck under a different name. And so those households would not qualify for the state program. People that rent one room would not qualify for the state program. Another subgroup would be our DACA recipients. They, even though they work, they go to school, and they have some protections, they are afraid to request any public assistance. And that includes unemployment benefits, or even rental assistance. They don't want to touch any of that, they don't want to jeopardize their only chance to stay here, and we understand that. And so we have created our program to make it easy for our residents to apply, and for them to get, or the landlords to get the money. And so we've been helping for the last few weeks, knowing that this was coming, and using our local contacts, landlords. We have identified some families, we have, as of today, we have helped 18 families, and we still, we have about $250,000 left from the CDBG program to help more people after April 1st. And after that money gets exhausted, we intend to use the Permanent Local Housing Grant to continue helping most, more people if they need more help. So under the rental assistance program for the city, and that is strictly for city residents, they have to be low-income residents, under the, the state's guidelines, for the county median income, which for a family of four, that would be $111,000. They have to have experienced a loss or reduction of income due to COVID-19, they have to be affected by COVID. There are people that have chosen not to pay rent, but they could be doing so. But we have to document that they have been affected by COVID. And lastly, they also have to prove that they cannot pay their rent, they have fallen behind, and that they have no alternate means to pay. But going forward, if we help them with one, up to three months, that they can get back on their feet, they can continue, and we'll be okay. And so with that, we recommend that the City Council appropriate $20,000 from the Affordable Housing Fund to provide additional COVID-related tenant assistance, and to direct our staff, community development staff, to continue to work with our regional partners regarding rental and legal assistance programs and services. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Carlos Landevery. Okay, so City Council, do we have any clarifying or technical questions? Councilwoman Garcia?
And you have responded, but I would like the community to hear your answer. So I'll ask the question again, is the proposal that's before us today, how or is that proposal related to the city emergency rental assistance? So for example, if they apply for rental assistance, do they automatically get the assistance of this new proposal?
So the, the proposal today, the $20,000 is in addition to our rental assistance program. The rental assistance program is limited, is strictly for Watsonville residents, but our $20,000 could be used regionally, and once we combine it with the, the county and the other cities, then we can do more work with our local network, so that we can help just about everyone, and in essence, we can have the same message to everyone. But if local residents need actual financial assistance, then we can do that, and we administer that in-house.
Very good, thank you. My second question is, $20,000 does not seem like much when you compare it to the county's $500,000. So my question is, is why are we not asking for more than $20,000?
Very good question. If we had more money, I would ask for authority to spend more money. But our Affordable Housing Fund is very limited, it's local money, it's replenished by people repaying their loans, or by in lieu fees every time there is new construction, and then those, those dollars can go into that fund. So we don't have a lot of money, but if we had more, I would, I would hap, happily ask for more so we could spend it.
Okay, because I was planning to make a motion to ask for more money, but I won't now. Thank you.
You manage your pro temp?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Garcia, I may also add that in our meetings with the County of Santa Cruz, it's just really a regional effort, and, and, you know, well, 500,000, those $500,000 that the, the Board of Supervisors allocated will also come directly to Watsonville residents, not just residents of the unincorporated areas. So it's truly all of us at the table, regionally, county, and cities, working together, making sure that no family is, misses out the opportunity of obtaining assistance from the state program for lack of case management and counseling or legal advice in, in terms of being eligible. So the good news is that while we may not have a lot more to put at the table this time, that we have the commitment of our partners to, to serve our Watsonville residents.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Hurst, you had your hand up?
I think part of my question was already answered about the Affordable Housing Fund, and how is it replenished, and what makes it up, but what would be the, the remainder after this $20,000? Do we have anything left to do other affordable housing aids?
Good question, I'm looking for our Finance Director. I don't have exact numbers, but just to give you an idea, that's the fund that we use to cover homeless services, the count, our share, as we work regionally, that's, we use that money to, for down payment assistance, for families that are above the low income, they're a moderate and above moderate income, and for some staff time. We use it to cover whenever our, because our funds are very restricted, if I have someone working on CDBG, they can bill CDBG. If I have someone working on former redevelopment agency activities, then we can bill to that fund, or if they work on home, issuing first-time homebuyer loans under the home program or the Calhome program, that also includes refinances, any loan servicing under those programs, we can bill under, we can bill those programs. But anything else we do, then we, this is our go-to fund. It's the most flexible fund, but it's one that I am most protective of, because that's something that we can use when we have an emergency. And a, a very good example was the homeless encampment. That came to us very quickly, and, but that was one fund that, that we could use.
Councilman Estrada?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Carlos, for the presentation, that was very informative. I had just two clarifying questions, and I'm sorry if I missed it. The first one is, is there a cap for people with the 20K? Like, is there a maximum that they can get, or could one person get all $20,000 if they needed it?
So the, thank you for your question. The $20,000 is for the regional pool of money to help everyone.
Okay, so collectively speaking, they'll have access to a lot?
Right, right. But the, the rental assistance, the CDBG program allows up to six months of rent, we have established a rule that we will do up to three months of rent. And the reason is because we already used CDBG in the past, and some people received one or two months of financial assistance. And so with three more months, that could bring them up to five months, or up to six months if we need to. And we look at those on a case-by-case basis. But if a family can back, can get back on their feet with one month of rent, we will do that. Some families will need two, three months, we can do that. Anything over four months with CDBG funds, that means that we also have to do a visual inspection of the apartment, we have to do a lead inspection, it, it just involves a lot more work. And so I'm trying to, especially during COVID, we were trying to limit that. And another provision is the CDBG has very specific rules for double-dipping. We, if another source of funds can be used, then we have to go through that fund before we use CDBG. And so there is no, the, the cap is, long answer to, to get to your point, there is, the cap is six months, there's no dollar amount. But if we are able, if we identify very low-income families that may need that, the extra help under the PLHA, the Permanent Local Housing Allocation, we will be able to help more. And the way we pitched it to the state is, we were starting with our internal programs, our CDBG programs, and if families need more, and in an effort to prevent homelessness, we will go the extra mile, we will help them more using the, the other grant. So there is, there is really no cap, but we want to have a plan. We want to work with families so that they can get back on their feet, but they also have a plan to move forward.
That's great.
This is, it won't be an ongoing, it won't be forever.
Right, that's really great. Yeah. Thank you for that. And then my second question was, if the state does provide the extension, are we in a good position, have we learned our lessons to make sure that the other half will, will be efficient, timely, so that hopefully by the end of the next extension, they'll be good?
So they're, they're moving faster, so it's really, you know, we're pushing, it's not really up to us, but I know that the state is moving faster, they're spending more money. I know that the local partner network, and all of our COPA leaders, and now our county partners, and now us, we are all asking our state officials to be more responsible, and to give us the numbers. So to give you an idea, we have requested information on those 889 applications. Out of those, we don't know who, who has applied, who needs assistance, who hasn't turned in all of the info, so we can help them. And our local network, they also want to have that information, so as soon as we get it, we'll be able to move it faster. They're moving faster, and so I am hopeful that a lot more people will get help soon.
That's good to hear. Thank you, Carlos, those are my two questions, Mayor, thank you.
Carlos, just to follow up on that, so the 889 are the number of applications from the people of the city of Watsonville?
That is correct, yes.
And the state processes these applications?
Correct.
And they have not given us any information on the 889, and where they are in the process?
That's correct.
So I'm sure we're not the only municipality that's, that's dealing with that, or county?
No, we're not. So we heard that the city of Capitola, they already, they got some info on their numbers. So we requested the same, and I heard back from the county And I heard back from the county that they have requested the same info. The local partner network has requested that breakdown. And the, the state told the county on Friday afternoon that they will be working on it, and they will get us that info as soon as they can.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other, Councilwoman Dutra?
First of all, thank you, Carlos, for the presentation. Appreciate it. I, I think I want clarification, because I don't know if I heard you correctly. Did you say that, that the other jurisdictions throughout our county and cities, they have not acted on the rental and legal assistance programs and services until now?
Well, they, okay, let me rephrase you, let me go back. They've done some of their part, but not as much as Watsonville has done.
This is the most frustrating and troubling part of this whole conversation, is that we're all, we're down here in South County, we've been working on this for, for months and months and months and months and months. We get, you know, ridiculed by people north of us for not doing our part, and it just seems like they're not doing their part. So we need everybody to come to the table. And so I, I want to say thank you for all the work that you've done for us here in Watsonville, especially during COVID, to make sure that people were being taken care of, and it's time for the rest of the county to step up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Garcia?
This is for clarification. Be specific in terms of March 31st. If that's not extended, what does that mean by the end of March 31st? One. And, and two, if it does get extended, what does that mean?
So what we have heard, that if it gets extended, it'll be extended for then, for three to four months.
What specifically will be extended?
The, the part of AB 832 that requires the landlord to offer rent, to give the tenants the space and the time to apply for rental assistance. But the rental assistance portal closes on March 31st. So the people that would be protected with the extension would be people that have applied for rental assistance, and they're in the queue to get that assistance.
Okay.
And so the hope is that within three to four months, most of those applications would be processed, people will get their money.
But, but, but after March 31st, there can't be any new applications, or can there be?
Correct. So come Friday, people cannot apply for more assistance.
Right. Okay.
Unless there's an extension.
Yeah.
Even if there is an extension.
Even, the way we hear it, even with an extension, the March 31st for applicants, it's, it's set.
Okay. And hence the, the county funding, and then the city's participating with that to create some kind of buffer.
That's, that's right. And so what the county has asked of us is, if there is more money, if we have financial assistance, to use those local dollars to help local residents. And, but lucky for us, we already have that in place.
Okay. Great. So I'll go out to the public. There are no public comment at this time. So I'll come back to the council for a motion.
I'll move approval.
So we have a motion from Councilwoman Garcia, and a second from Mayor Protem Montesino. Do we have any other comments from Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I'd just like to, Carlos, I just want to thank, well, all your department and everyone working on this, because it's, I, I like the, not only helping people process, but also some of the counseling that you talked about. Because it's, it's, he has to give a handout, yeah, for a few months, but if you can't keep moving forward, what does that, what does that do to me? So just want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
And Carlos, I want to, I want to thank you for being a part of Watsonville. You have many choices to be other places, too. And I think you've helped so many with not only your knowledge of the programs, but creating those programs and bringing it to council, and having that, that compassion and understanding for people, and being able to go out there and talk to them. I just, I'm just so thankful that you're a part of, of Watsonville. Thank you. So having no more comments, we'll go to roll call.
Dutra?
Aye.
Estrada?
Aye.
Garcia?
Yes.
Hurst?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Quidos Carter?
Aye.
And Parker?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion carries.
So thank you very much. So we're, we have no emergency items added to the agenda, but we do, we are going to resume back into closed session. And so I will not be adjourning the meeting at this time. And do I need to take public comment again?
No, Madam Mayor, but we do have item 11, or is that, has that been?
Requesting scheduling future agenda items. It's usually one of those moments. Yes. Councilwoman Estrada?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I wanted a request, and I can't remember the last time we've had it, but, you know, our public works department is such a great job of sometimes cleaning up the homeless encampment and stuff. I, I think a presentation to the community would be sort of helpful, just so that people are aware of some of the things that they have to go through, and, you know, just to, to grow the, or to show some gratitude, too, for, for a lot of the work that they do, you know?
Wow, that was you. Okay, so, yeah, that would be great for a future agenda item. I think, I think there was some kind of report that we saw with the amount of things that the team moved things off of. So we're going to be moving into closed session. Thank you, everyone.